Very good. Morning. Today is Tuesday, March 30th, and this is the regularly regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Due to issues arising from COVID-19, the board is using a teleconferencing format for today's meeting. We are all participating via the worldwide web. If you'd like to make a public comment today, please make sure you are identified by name in the WebEx system. For those interested in commenting during unscheduled appearances, please use the raise your hand feature and wait to be recognized. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes for public comment. Each vote today will be a verbal or a voice vote so that members of the public can hear how each board member has voted. After we have had a motion and a second regarding each item we are taking up today, we were doing a roll call, vote by district. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley. Doug Verben is absent. Craig Peterson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Here.
Very good. So we have four present today. At this time, we'll move on to the invocation and Ms. Sylvia Gaston from Quania Church. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Let us bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you today on this beautiful day with praise and with thanksgiving for who you are and the control that you have over all things. Lord, we humbly bring our prayers and our petitions to you, but not just prayers, Lord, we want bold prayers. We pray for Kings County's economy, Father, not just the way it was, but even better than we can even imagine. God, we pray for not only safety in our community, but the bold prayer of a community like we've never seen before. A neighborly and safe place, God. We pray that you would eradicate evil and violence from our midst, Lord. Father, as always, we pray for wisdom for our leaders. God, we pray that you would give us right motives in everything that we do, that you would keep our first responders safe and passionate about what they do, Lord. And in fact, we extend that passion to every single person who hears my voice. Let us continue to be passionate for the for the work that you have before us, God. And we ask, of course, for your safety and your guidance. You guide our steps, Lord. We make our plans, but you guide our steps. And I just pray for every decision maker in the room right now, Father, that you would guide their steps. And we pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. P. Wood, please join me in the flag salute.
Ready to move.
Okay, we'll move to item two, which is unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or any other items of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction's board. Two minutes are allowed for each item, and I would ask that if you've provided written comment that you allow that to be accepted and that we, if anyone hasn't commented, then we would accept those. So. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be recognized.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I know there's a number of people that are online right now for the upcoming agenda item as it relates to the the projects prioritizing the projects for to send to Congressman Valadeo. I sent an email to our C O, Rebecca Campbell, yesterday. As as we were aware with Catherine, our clerk, sending us all those letters from that area. Would it be possible to either move that item up is so so these folks don't sit around on the virtual meeting waiting for that time to come up, as I know they'd like to have an opportunity to talk during that actual agenda item versus right now?
We're going to go through, we will finish unscheduled appearances and then we'll move to through the consent calendar and and then in regular agenda items, we'll move item C to the top of the list to try and accommodate that way. How's that?
Thank Mr. Chairman. I think that'll save a lot of time during unscheduled appearance, and those folks can hold off on their comments until then. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, I believe Supervisor Valley is asking you to allow the people who would ordinarily address this item in unscheduled appearances to actually be recognized when you call the item on the agenda. Was that the chair's intent? That is certainly within your discretion.
Yeah, to we'll we'll go with normal unscheduled appearances. If you have a comment with respect to the earmarks issue or item C, if you would wait until we get into the regular agenda items, I'll move item C to the top of the list, five C to we'll move through our regular agenda until that point.
Very good. And what I'm understanding you to say is that with respect to the letter comments regarding Agenda Item Five C, we will hold announcing those until we get to five C and that the folks who are on the line who want to speak to item five C will be recognized at the time you address that on the agenda instead of in unscheduled appearances. Am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct.
Okay, this is Catherine Ventarella, clerk to the Board of Supervisors. I do have one letter that is not pertaining to the earmark item, and it is from Ted Williams, and it will be become part of the record. I also have Dr. Stanley Dobbs, who is online, and I believe Jimmy White, who would like to speak. That is not regarding the earmark item.
Okay, then we'll move into our. Sure. So, Doctor, would you please provide your comments? Make sure you're unmuted. Okay, let's move to the next one and we'll come back.
I'm sorry, did you call Dr. Dobbs or I missed that part?
Yep. Are you ready?
You did. Oh, Dr. Dobbs.
I did.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. Well, good morning. I'm sorry. I was trying to adjust my technology at the time. But thank you, Board Supervisors, for the opportunity to speak. I'm Dr. Stanley Dobbs. I'm a retired Navy commander and also a retired superintendent for California, and I live in Kings County with my family. I was called in reference to some video that I received about a question last last meeting, I believe, before, I believe. And I thank the people on right now, but it was it was a reference to. And and I saw that video, and in that video I saw a comment that was made and by Sister Massie, who I do not know, and in reference to the action that was taken by the county supervisors. So I just wanted to call in and 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 say that I understand that the action was taken. It was based on a employee action. Discipline was provided. I do understand the question that was put on this review because I did I did review the online comment. I do understand the parity between B L M or Black Lives Matter and Belt Loose Matter was offensive to to some people. But I also know as a as an educator and administrator that that black folks don't have a lock on sagging pants anymore and like they never did. I also want to apologize to the Board of Supervisors because I was highly offended. I was more offended by the comments from Miss Massie than I was about the Belt Loose Matter, the reference to slaves being sodomized by their masters in front of their families, and then also a reference in the Bible about sagging pants. That was offensive. That has no credibility to anything that was done and was demeaning to your action taken as a Board of Supervisors. So I want to say, I've known Scott Hallwell myself over 20 years in his military capacity and in his former capacity appointed by you as a as a public guardian. And I know this man, and I understand that his comments, and he now understands that his comments could have been construed in a different way, especially in today's sensitive environment. I think once the action is taken, action is done. To come now and say, well, I want more action to be taken is inappropriate. And I want to make it known as a citizen, a voting member of this county, a voting member of this state, a veteran, and a and a black man, that I support the decision you made, the punishment that you dished out. And I also support the fact that you're doing the right thing in Kings County to make sure that Scott Hallwell continues to serve veterans of this of this community. I also want to say thank you so much Supervisor Valley for moving up the item from Congressman because that is what's very important to our economy and to the people of Kings County. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Doctor. Okay, we'll move to the. Okay, so that's all the hands that we have raised at this time on the issue of unscheduled appearances. So at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question just procedure wise. You mentioned that if anyone wrote a letter, you were asking them to not duplicate the time and make a comment during the upcoming item. However, I believe the doctor that just spoke also wrote a letter. Is I'm asking the clerk if that's a letter that we received and that she just mentioned would be put in the record? Because if he wrote a letter and then spoke, I would ask that that same courtesy be allowed to the folks who are waiting for the next time. Thank you. And I'll ask for clarification on that.
Supervisor Valley through the chair, this is Catherine Ventarella. We did not receive a letter from Dr. Dobbs.
Thank you. I was confused from the from the letter that we did receive. Thank you.
Okay, at this time.
My name is Jimmy White. I would like to speak on the Scott Hallwell situation here.
Okay, please go ahead.
I'm Reverend Jimmy White. I've known Scott for a number of years, about 20 of them to be exact. And he served honorably in the military. And in the years that I've known Scott, there has never been anything inappropriate with him. He has always served our country and served our people well. This is a man that has dedicated his life and is committed to serving the people of this country, doing what's right for us. And when I read the article and and I went back and looked at the previous meeting you had on this, and I understand where Sister Massie is coming from, but however, we need to understand that in America today, the sagging pants thing is not limited to just one group of people. It's everybody that's doing it today, all of our children doing it today. And a lot of us don't like it one way or the other. It doesn't matter. And I researched the article and even that guy is confused with what he's talking about. So what I'm trying to say here is that I personally know this man, and I know this man is committed to doing what's right. I know this man has dedicated his life to doing what's right. I know this man knows what he's talking about. This is a man that will help our veterans, not hinder them. He strives to do nothing but the best for them, you know? And I agree with Dr. Dobson that once the action is taken, it's taken. He has been meted out his punishment. It should be left as it is right now. Let it go. There's nothing else to gain from hammering it anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Any further comments, Madam Clerk? Any raised hands?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask the clerk if this is a gentleman who wrote the letter?
Supervisor Valley through the chair, this is Catherine Ventarella, the clerk. I did not receive a letter from Mr. White.
Okay, thank you.
Is there one other? No, we're good. Okay, thank you. All right, at this point, we'll move to item three, which is always a good thing, which is different than a normal meeting. But today we have employee recognition, and Ms. Campbell, if I could lead it off.
Yes, I would. So even through COVID-19, we do have an employee recognition committee, and they have gathered to select the new employee of the quarter. I want to introduce Sheriff David Robinson, who will introduce the employee of the quarter. And so Sheriff, I'll turn it over to you, and thank you for bringing your employee and highlighting her today.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Appreciate it. We're going to step into the well because Marcy Snyder's family is actually watching from home today. And we're super excited to be able to present Marcy with the Employee of the Quarter recognition this quarter. And I'm I'm excited that there's extra people on today, too, to to actually witness something like this. So it's it's great to see everybody's faces, and thanks for joining us today. Marcy's been with the sheriff's office for almost 24 years. I believe her 24 year anniversary will be this December. And, you know, I'll just say that a few weeks ago, she had to take a couple of weeks off from work, and I had requested some information, and they said, hey, you're just going to have to wait till Marcy gets back. That was literally the answer. And I'm like, I shouldn't have to wait till Marcy gets back. And they're like, yeah, she's the only one that knows how to do that. So there's a lot that Marcy does for us. She started with us as a department specialist and is now a detention's technician running our classification unit from the detention's technician perspective. And our classification unit handles all the classifications for every inmate that comes into the jail facility. So whether they're a gang member or a sexual offender or whatever their classification is, Marcy has her hand in, you know, where that person's going to get housed and what their classification is and to make sure that we protect the integrity of the facility, but also protect the safety of the inmates and staff. The other thing that she does for me every, I think, two weeks is she puts together a list of our state prison inmates and our mental health inmates who are ready to be seen or transported to the state prison or to the state hospital. It's a daunting task when you have 600 inmates and you got to go through the list and figure out who's ready for what. And so she handles a lot of paperwork for us. She was nominated by Sergeant Chisholm for the Employee of the Quarter. And and it's one of those nominations where I would expect to see this almost every quarter of Marcy because there isn't a day that goes by that she's not there in the office, working hard for us and putting your best foot forward. A few years ago, we went through a new database. It's called Spillman. And Marcy and another employee, Abrina, were really the two that took that thing head on. So whenever we have technical difficulties or whenever your board or the C O's office calls for data or stats, it's literally Marcy and Abrina that that are putting those together for us. Sometimes they have to hand search each and every inmate that's in our facility and literally print the entire list and go through each and every one. And they do an amazing and outstanding job. And and today, and to Marcy's family at home, we appreciate you watching. Be very proud of Marcy because she's done so right by us for 24 years. I'm fortunate to only have one year on her, basically about a year and a half. And so we've worked together our entire careers, and it's been an amazing ride. I look forward to a few more together with you. So Marcy, congratulations and thank you for everything that you do.
We'll wait, wait at home. And I believe the chairman has a presentation as well.
Well, Marcy, thank you so much for everything you do. I know you've worked in one of the most challenging environments that the county has to offer, and you stayed for a long time. So I don't know if you bumped your head or what you did, but 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 we are so appreciative of everything you do. So on behalf of the County Board of Supervisors, but more importantly, the people of Kings County, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Marcy. Appreciate it.
Congratulations, Marcy.
I think there's some checks.
Yes, Marcy, Marcy will receive a $300 check. So congratulations. Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Right, on to item four, which is approval of the minutes from the March 23rd, 2021 regular meeting. Word with your pleasure.
Nev's seconds.
So a motion by Fagundes, second by Nev's. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verben is absent. Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yeah, do we have four in favor? We'll move to the next item, which is item five, the consent calendar.
Nev's moves to accept the consent calendar as printed.
We have a motion by Nev, second by Fagundes. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verben is absent. Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
We have four in favor on that as well. So now we'll move to item six, regular agenda items. And as outlined prior, we're going to take item five C first with administration Rebecca Campbell.
Yes, and I'm going to ask my Sarah Poots to pull up the presentation. So thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, members of the board. We have a presentation for your board today. We came to your board last week in a study session regarding the community project federal funding request for federal fiscal year 2022. And so we continued to work throughout throughout the week with, I worked with our federal lobbyist and over the weekend and up until this morning. So there's still some questions, but we're going to try to get through this today so we can meet the deadline with Congressman Valadeo's office tomorrow. So next slide, please. So this is regarding the 2022 Community Project Funding Request, which is the new term for federal earmarks. Federal earmarks haven't been around for a number of years, but surprisingly came back to us just over a week ago. Guidelines were released to the county on Thursday, March 18th of 2022. Last week, we did hold a study session with your board and introduced some county-related projects to your board. Our departments came forward and submitted those requests. The requests are due to the congressman's office tomorrow, and then that will be a process that we will work with the congressman's office on. Today, we are asking that you rank all of the projects and decide how many you want to submit. We are recommending that you submit two to four projects. I also want to note that we do have our federal lobbyists on the line, Paragon Government Relations. Mr. Joe Cronk should be on the line today and has assisted our office with some of the information today. Next slide, please. So guidelines to be aware of as we move through this process. Funds need, the funds need to be obligated. The word there is obligated fiscal year 2022. So in regards to obligation of the funds, these are not expenditures. This would mean that they're the project, the project funds need to be earmarked. They would need to, at the very least, have an order placed, a contract signed, a grant awarded, a service purchased, or an action taken to make the payment in federal fiscal year 2022. Each congressional district will only be allowed to submit up to 10 project requests. So for Congressman Valadeo, he would have up to 10 for his whole district. Also, we approximate that awards will not be over $1 million. They could, in in past history with earmarks, they have been anywhere from $200,000 up to $1 million. But $1 million was the top that we've seen in historical practice. So, next slide, please. A quick review of the projects that were discussed last week. We had the from administration, the Juvenile Center project. This is a project that is in construction phase, and it did go out to bid. It was short of funds. So this is a project that was being requested. Community Development Agency, the Jackson Ranch project. This is a new development project south in the southern portion of the county. District Attorney's Office, Family Justice Center, Family Justice Center project. This is a new project. And it would be, any activities related to it would have to start with design. Fire Department Emergency Operations Center project. This would be a replacement building for the existing Emergency Operations Center. The building is approaching its end of life, and it is a modular building currently. Human Services Agency, the non-congregate low barrier shelter project. Currently, we have a project called Project Room Key. This is a temporary program that is housing folks in a hotel, homeless folks. But this will go away after the pandemic. So there is still a need for a non-congregate low barrier shelter project. Public Works Department, State Route 41 pedestrian bridge project. This is a pedestrian bridge that would replace the existing crosswalk on State Highway 41 in Kettleman City. This would need to enter into design for this project. Sheriff's Department Jail Rehabilitation Expansion Project. The jail has seen a number of phases and some rehabilitative space, but this would be additional rehabilitative space for the inmates in there to help them succeed. Also, the Sheriff's Department Deputy Sheriff's Body Camera Project. So this would be a new project for the sheriff's office and would outfit the deputy sheriffs with body cameras. Next slide, please. We did find out that a few of the projects are ineligible for the agricultural department community facilities grant, the administration juvenile center project, the district attorney's office, family justice center project, and the sheriff's department jail rehabilitative expansion project. We did reach out to the USDA to find out if they would be eligible for construction because the guideline wasn't as clear. And because the projects would be located in Hanford, the rule on that is that the it needs to be built in the unincorporated area or a community of 20,000 or less, and it must serve primarily rural residents. So we were told that the community facilities grants are typically limited to $50,000 and are used for equipment and small renovations. But we did receive, we did find out over the weekend that the Family Justice Center may be eligible through the Housing and Urban Development Economic Development Initiative. So we're continuing to look into that and see if that funding stream could fund the design services specifically. So that could still be a possibility. Next slide, please. Other eligible projects that we do see, the Fire Department Emergency Operations Center would qualify under the Department of Homeland Security FEMA Emergency Operations Center Grant. Human Services Agency, the non-congregate low barrier shelter would be eligible under the Housing and Urban Development Economic Development Initiative. We would need to check to see if if the project needs to start with design services, if it would fund those services. And also the Sheriff's Deputy Body Camera Project would qualify under the Department of Justice COPS Technology and Equipment. Next slide, please. Also, the Community Development Agency, Jackson Ranch Project, that one as well. We are seeing that would be related to economic commercial development-related activities that could be funded under the Department of Housing and Urban Development Economic Development Initiative. And the Public Works Department's State Route 41 pedestrian bridge project is also eligible for the Economic Development Initiative funds, and we would need to go back and check to see if it could fund design services. I want to make a correction from the staff report. This project is not eligible under the Department of Transportation Title 23 project funds, as stated in the staff report. So I just wanted to clear that. Next slide, please. Wanted to let your board about some new information that came in over the weekend. The House Transportation Infrastructure Committee did announce that it will be accepting separate. separate earmark requests in conjunction with this year's Surface Transportation, which is the FAST Act reauthorization bill. This is outside of this appropriation request, and Representative Valadeo's unofficial deadline will be the week of April 5th for that. So, there's more to come on that. If a project is on the state transportation infrastructure plan, then it automatically qualifies under this process, and also, this would be coming out through federal highways and federal transit monies. So, just wanted to make a note on that. Next slide, please. Okay, so also, wanted to let your board know that on Thursday, late Thursday, we did receive a request from the Kings County Area Public Transit Agency. The request came in on Thursday, March 25th. They, that agency is submitting their own earmark request through Congressman Valadeo's office. The director should be on the line today, Ms. Angie Dow, if you have any questions, and they are asking for a letter of support for their project. The letter was provided, and I did submit that as part of the packet, but I wanted to let your board know technically this would compete with Kings County projects. So, I wanted to note that as well. Next slide, please. So, this is the end of the presentation. I did put the projects back up there for you to look over. Want to open it up if you have any questions or comments, but I want, am requesting your board that you do rank these projects. What we plan to do is next, after you rank the projects, we will work with Congressman Valadeo's office and continue this process to see what will be the best qualified according to your ranking, and we will submit anywhere from two to four projects. Okay, and then that's my presentation. I will now open it up for any questions or comments, and as a reminder, I do have representatives from Paragon Government Relations on the line, and so if you have any questions, we're here to answer.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, there's a number of people joining us today, and Joe Cron from Paragon, if I could impose on you just to maybe outline again kind of the parameters which you have seen past, current, you know, having some experience with earmarks in my early agricultural days and commodity representation and actually getting some funding through earmark, it used to be very bipartisan, you know, it was on a regional basis, and I know this has changed and it's new for everyone, but maybe just a quick outline if we could take the presentation down and...
Sir, if you could stop sharing for now, and then if we need it back, we'll ask you. Thank you.
Hey, there's Joe.
Well, thank you. Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate that, and thanks, Rebecca. Assume you can all hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Excellent, excellent. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, happy to kind of go over some of the history because I think it is important to note some of the sort of items you're bringing to the forefront here since this is something that hasn't been, you know, looked at by Congress in over a decade. We talked about some of this last week, but I think it bears repeating. Again, I think as folks know, this has been a bit of a fire drill, to say the least. Congress did decide just, you know, about a month ago to bring these back. Guidelines didn't come out until just a week or so ago. So, there's a lot of questions, and not just from Kings County, by the way. We work with other stakeholders. Folks up and down the state and across the country are flooding the House Appropriations Committees with questions about eligibility, parameters, how much can we get funded, things of this nature. I will tell you, some of those questions can be answered, and some of them have not been answered to this day, and I think, you know, continue, they're going to continue to sort of be raised as we go throughout this process again, and that's a result of the fact that earmarks have not been around for a decade. They are just bringing them back, and to be candid, most of the folks on Capitol Hill have not dealt with these. So, it's sort of a new process. As far as the politics in some of this, and as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, yes, in some cases in the past, you know, earmarking could certainly help sort of grease the wheels to help pass legislation. You did see some bipartisanship you'd have in some instances, members of both parties going in on a particular regional earmark request, which certainly can help, you know, move that forward. In many ways, the earmarking process was years ago, and I think will continue to be very parochial. As Rebecca mentioned, one of the new stipulations this time around is that members of Congress, members of the House, will only be able to submit a total of 10 projects. So, that goes back to that comment about this being very parochial. In other words, if you look at Congressman Valadeo's example, he's going to be hearing presumably from all of the counties, you know, cities, and a lot of the nonprofits in his district asking for support for earmarks. And so, you know, it's not an easy position to be in, quite frankly, as you go to the Appropriations Committee to ask for these things to be funded. I would further point out that, you know, competition is going to be stiff for the dollars that are going to be available. What we do know from the House Appropriations Committee is they are willing to earmark, quote, "up to 1% of the total federal budget." You know, that would be about, you know, 13 or 14 billion dollars, but there's no guarantee they're going to earmark all of that. If you do the math on that, you divide that by the number of members of Congress, and you look at the funds, it would come out to, again, 10 projects per member at a cost of about $3 million per project. But here's the thing, there's no guarantee of that. As Rebecca mentioned, historically, a million-dollar earmark was a pretty rich earmark, and typically those would be things oftentimes that would be coming from, you know, the Senate Majority Leader or a chairman of an appropriations committee. Sort of your rank and file members, you know, we're getting, it depend on the type of earmark, type of project, could be $100,000, $250,000. There's no easy answer to some of these questions as far as, well, how much can we get? We don't know the answer to that question today, neither does the congressman's office, and this is all something that's going to be worked out as Congress does the FY 2022 budget and as they work out all the details on earmarks. So, you know, we appreciate everyone's patience on this as the, again, the committee attempts to reinstate a decade-old process. I think Rebecca had the best advice, which is, at this point, I think the important thing for the board is to obviously rank the projects. They all appear to be very meritorious projects. Obviously, it would help the community, help the county. The one that doesn't appear to fit into any of sort of easy identifiable box within the guidelines that the Appropriations Committee has released is the Juvenile Justice Center. All of the other projects appear to fit into one of, one category, even several categories. I think moving forward, as Rebecca said, what we're going to do is after the board ranks these and prioritizes these is go to Congressman Valadeo and work with them to ensure that these are eligible projects and work with the Appropriations Committee to ensure so, and then move forward. One last comment, while the official deadline to submit these is tomorrow, and that's an early deadline compared to other congressional offices, we see this as a positive, that Congressman Valadeo is asking for them early on. That allows him and us to work with him to further vet the priorities. So, you know, we see that actually as a positive to give us additional time to further vet the projects. So, I don't know if Hassan has anything to add in, but that's kind of where things stand, and we're happy to answer any questions that we can.
Well, Joe, thank you so much, and Hassan, I know you guys spent multiple hours over the last five days in trying to find what works and what doesn't with the limited knowledge we have at this point on the issue. But, so at this point, we'll bring it back to the board for any opinion, direction, discussion that may exist.
Mr. Chairman, clarification, just so we could clarify the upcoming conversation. The point of order on this letter here from CART, can we take that up separately after we have the discussion and have the motions entertained on ranking these projects, one and two, and then take up the subject matter of this letter separately, please? That way, it doesn't dilute the conversation.
Madam Counsel, I see you have some...
Mr. Chair, yes, you may take them up separately. It would be based on whatever motion is posed. It could be posed jointly, or it could be posed separately. So, Supervisor Valley's point is well-taken. I also might just remind the chair that you deferred public comment on this item until this item was taken up on the regular agenda, and the board may want to hear from the public before it begins its discussion.
Yeah, definitely. I just want to make sure that if there are any comments by the board, that if they wanted to start.
Agreed upon, Mr. Chair, that we take up the letter after this item?
By consensus, everyone is okay with that? Supervisor Fagundes, you okay?
The question that's posed Supervisor Fagundes is to address the ranking of the projects themselves as a separate item from the K-CAPDA support, and to take that up separately after the board addresses the ranking of the various projects. And the chair is seeking consensus as to whether the board is all right with that.
Yeah, I guess, yep. Okay, Pierce, we do have consensus on that, on that issue, and seeing no further discussion by the board at this point, then we can move to public comment.
Thank you, Chairman. This is Catherine Ventarella, clerk to the Board of Supervisors. I have 12 letters. I will state the names of who they are from. The first letter is signed by Lupe Chavez and Pat Sanchez. My second letter is from Kristi Castillo. The third letter is from Sylvia Maldonado. The fourth letter is from Abdul Mohammed. Fifth letter is from Marco Sandoval. Fifth letter is from Rudy Alatorre. Sixth letter is from Ernesto Lopez Jr. Seventh letter is from Robert Henry. Eighth letter is from Maricela Marce Alatorre. Ninth letter is from Miguel Alatorre Jr. Tenth letter is from Kings County Fire Department. It is not signed by anyone. It's just from the full department. And my last letter is from Bob Lewis, and they will all be made part of the record.
Thank you. And do we have any hands raised?
I do. I have five hands raised, two of which, three of which have submitted letters.
Mr. Chairman, to that point, could we go ahead and, I think it's, I think it's appropriate just to allow whoever wants to speak, to speak. I mean, we're at a time right now where people aren't even allowed in the chambers right now due to the coronavirus guidelines that, you know, we have to adhere to, and the naming...
We have a list, so we'll start down that list at this point. And so, first on the list is DA Fagundes.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to take some time and let the board know that I appreciate staff's interest in not only our family justice project, but also every project on the list. I think every project is worthwhile and will certainly improve our county. I think that the work put in since last week, I know into the weekend and into the evenings is not work done lightly, and so I appreciate staff and all the efforts, and Mr. Cron for his guidance through finding the eligible projects. And, you know, I just wanted to say thank you to staff and commend staff for putting forth some really good efforts on finding the best projects, and I'll commend the board in their tough decision you have in finding the best project that's going to give immediate assistance to our community in whatever fashion, and they're all worthwhile. So, for that, I'll leave those comments there, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Lupe Chavez.
Oh, he's muted.
You're muted, sir.
Okay, sorry about that. Got that? Yep, okay. Lupe Chavez, School Board President for Reed Sunset Unified School District. Just here to pretty much support, and hopefully, I think I've got a tough decision this morning about the bridge on Highway 41 crossing. We do have some of our students that live on that side of the 41, which would be more the east side. They got to cross to the west side to the school, especially in winter time, you know, when it's foggy, you know, it is a hazard for them, and we just want to provide them a safe pass so they can get to school, get educated, and thank you for your time and for allowing us to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sheriff Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate it. I'll be super brief, just two projects that I think merit being ranked one and two, and I don't have a particular order, is the Fire Department project on the EOC. And just to note that the EOC is also our secondary dispatch center. So, when our dispatch center goes down, or like during the pandemic when we had multiple staff that had been exposed and we needed to decontaminate our dispatch center, the EOC acted as our secondary dispatch center that we operated dispatch out of. So, I think that project is worthy, and then also the pedestrian bridge in Kettleman City, you know, with the amount of traffic that goes through there and it gets backed up, and then you have the single lane that goes across the aqueduct. Any relief that we could get out there for emergency response is going to be a huge benefit, and so I just support those two projects. I think all the projects are worth merit, and hopefully, we can, you know, seek, you know, grants and other things, but those would be my two recommended projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kristi Castillo.
Hi, good morning. Good morning, esteemed members of the board. Can you hear me?
Yeah, if you could just speak up your little bit light. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kristi Castillo. I'm principal of Kettleman City Elementary School. I thank you for this opportunity to convey my interest and concern in the potential project of a pedestrian bridge over Highway 41 in the community of Kettleman. As principal of our Raze School, over the past five years, I'm charged with the safety of my students and my team members, and to the best of my ability, I work very hard to ensure a safe environment for everyone. However, I have witnessed the large flow of traffic that happens on a daily basis in Kettleman, and it is cause for great concern for those parents and children trying to cross the highway, along with any other community member. The community is divided by Highway 41, which is a busy roadway for both travelers and truck drivers, and they're usually heading out to the coast or trying to reach I-5. This roadway becomes particularly congested on Fridays during spring, summer, and fall months for weekend or vacation travel. It becomes a hazardous situation when I have students and parents who, right around the 3:00 hour as school lets out, they're trying to cross the highway using the crosswalk, but who are facing a long line of traffic that don't yield when they're supposed to. When there is a sheriff's deputy present and parked right adjacent to the crosswalk, it certainly encourages the drivers to yield to the pedestrian traffic, but I know how busy they can be, and they, the sheriff's deputies are always able to be present as they get called away to other areas of the county. My concern for the safety of our parents and students only increases as the foggy season hits, and it becomes especially difficult for drivers to physically see pedestrians trying to cross. It is difficult and wearisome to hear the firsthand accounts from our staff who recount these near misses that happen between the traffic and our students, particularly when drivers choose to ignore the posted speed limits. I am deeply grateful that so far, none of these near miss incidents has actually resulted in a tragic accident, but it is for all of these reasons that I respectfully request that the board provide the support needed to construct a pedestrian bridge over Highway 41 so that students, parents, and other residents are able to cross the highway to reach our school or other destinations within the community without risk to their own lives. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Pat Sanchez.
Good morning, members of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you this morning for an opportunity to speak briefly. Besides what's in the letter and what's been stated relative to the pedestrian bridge, I do want to ask you to please prioritize this as the, one of the, I would say, the number one possibly funding this. As a superintendent, I clearly understand that boards are brought dilemmas. You're often having to choose between things that are both good and you can't have both, but I would implore you to really think about this from a student's perspective. This whole idea that I mentioned in the letter relative to having safe routes to school is really kind of a fundamental principle that children should have. There shouldn't be fear or anxiety just getting to school or stress getting across the highway. This has been ongoing, it's been studied, it's been looked at, and I'm so glad that you guys are considering this, and I would just implore you to really, as you think about Kettleman City and you think about Highway 41, please think about the kids and think about the community there. They really do deserve a safe route to school. They really do deserve a safe route to school. I know our principal and our board has been concerned about this for many years. And as typical with one-time money, you try to do things you probably couldn't do for a very long time. This has kind of been on hold for a while. So I'd encourage you to really consider this as a great option for some one-time money to really make a difference for the safety of children in this community. With that, I do want to thank all of you for your support of our district and our partnership. I do value each and every one of you and your, your support of our school district. And with that, I will close my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Rob Brunel.
Good morning to all of you. This is Lieutenant Robert Brunel from the California Highway Patrol Colonia area. It's a pleasure to be here with all of you and thank you for the opportunity to make a comment here. I just wanted to say in regard to the State Route 41 pedestrian bridge that's being proposed, the Highway Patrol is supportive of roadway engineering projects designed to improve traffic safety. And we would classify this bridge project to be a safety enhancement, which would allow the residents of Kettleman City to cross their community without having to walk directly onto Highway 41, which as we all know is a very busy highway. And, you know, with that, we just, I want to say thank you for the consideration of this safety project and the opportunity here to reduce the potential for vehicle versus pedestrian types of collisions.
Thank you, Mr. Brunel. Oh, Dominic Tiversky, please go ahead, Tom.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dominic Tiversky, Public Works Director, Kings County. So I just wanted to add a couple of points to the discussion. I have been in contact with Caltrans and they have stated that they would support the county's endeavor to design and construct this project. They do not have any pedestrian crossings planned within their, within their future. However, they did say that typically these types of projects are funded by the local agencies and maintained by the local agencies. So it's not something that would likely be on their radar. Additionally, our typical funding sources such as CMAC, HCP, ATP would not fund this type of a project. So if it's determined that this is an eligible project and we could get sufficient funding, this would be a unique opportunity to, to make this project become a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? That would, after listening to discussion, Mr. Cron, just from a procedural standpoint, you know, if there is a limitation of a million, in, in historical perspective, I mean, what, what is the timeline of, of funding commitment from an earmark? And, and if you don't have the full funding, how, how, what's the life of that?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, historically, if you look at it, there haven't always been sort of parameters on when you need to spend the money. I'll talk about that for a second within the context of this year's appropriations process. We've seen historically over time with certain bills, both appropriations bills and transportation bills, where earmarks could sit unused for a decade or more. I would caution you against this. What happens then is Congress starts to go and they start to claw back money that's not spent. So there's, there's precedent for Congress saying, wow, how come this earmark was never spent? We're going to take the money back. We're going to rescind the funding. I'll also just emphasize that, that, that million dollar mark is, is very much just an estimation. Hassan and I have done a lot of, of research, looking back at previous appropriations bills going back over a decade. You do find some projects where again, you might find a huge project, a mega project that's funded, let's say, at $10 million. But that's again, generally something that a lot of members are putting in for. You know, Speaker of the House wants it, Senate Majority Leader wants it, et cetera. You might find some from three to five. We're giving that million dollar mark as sort of, again, if you look at every earmark over time, you know, they might all sort of average out to be that. It doesn't mean you need to come in lower or, or, or higher. It's just an estimate. If there's a project that comes in above that, I think my best advice would be I would go ahead and ask for it. It doesn't hurt to ask. We're not being told by the Appropriations Committee that we are hamstrung that you, you know, members cannot ask for more than a million dollar for a project, absolutely not. They, they can ask for more. The ultimate discretion on this is it's going to be up to the Appropriations Committee to decide how much will we ultimately fund a project at? So I just want to be clear about that. That's just our, our best guess ballpark estimation. You know, pending any further guidance or something coming out from the committee, there are no necessarily limitations on that. But we want to be also politically realistic. The other thing that I, I just would, would emphasize, Mr. Chairman, was, and Rebecca indicated this earlier, some of the subcommittees, not all of them, are placing an emphasis on, again, the ability of a public entity to obligate funding within fiscal year 2022. So that would be, you know, obligating that funding beginning October 1 of this year, ending September 30 of next year. They've stopped short of saying we won't fund it if you can't obligate it. But they're, they've clearly put in that guidance, a little bit of a premium on a county city transit agents, et cetera, being able to obligate the funding. So we want to be clear about that. You know, anecdotally and politically, I think, you know, a lot of members of Congress will be looking at this as an opportunity to do ribbon cutting ceremonies. You know, we do have an election coming up next year. So, you know, a lot of folks, again, are saying anecdotally, this is going to be great, you know, ribbon cutting opportunities for, you know, shovel ready projects. Again, the committee is not saying it needs to be shovel ready. It's not saying the money needs to be spent next year. But there is that sort of political anecdote as far as let's get this money into projects that can be funded so we can, you know, show communities the value of earmarks. I think that's politically what House Democrats were thinking when they brought this, this process back. So kind of keep that in mind as you're ranking, that there is a bit of a premium on an ability to obligate, which, you know, means commit funding, not spending, committing that funding or signing a contract for a particular project. Sort of the last thing I would say is want to clarify something else. With regard to transportation projects and per one of the slides that Rebecca put up, there is an opportunity, there will be, to fund transportation projects through the FY 2022 appropriations process. Separate and apart from that, the House Transportation and Infrastructure Committee will be doing a separate five or a six-year long-term, call it the FAST Act, Transportation Reauthorization Bill. That committee will also be accepting, they're calling them member designated projects. They will be accepting solicitations. The word of caution on that is there's no guarantee that Congress is going to pass a long-term transportation bill this year. Our fingers are crossed that they will do that. They've been sitting on that now for over a year. But there will be presumably another opportunity, or I would say a concurrent opportunity to submit transportation projects. Again, one through the appropriations process, another through the FAST Act reauthorization process. Just want to point that out and be clear, but there are no guarantees that that FAST Act reauthorization bill will pass. So also keep that in mind as you look to rank projects. And then I guess the final word related to that is there's nothing that precludes the county from submitting a project to both processes, if it's a transportation project. You could submit it for appropriations and looking to get contract authority through the infrastructure committee as well. If that sounds confusing, it's because it is. It's a complex process. We're happy to answer any clarifying questions.
So one, one further quick question here with respect to funding from different opportunities in the past, any, any negatives with co-mingling or applying for, for multiple funding opportunities within situations like this?
I, I don't think so, Mr. Chairman. You mean as far as if you were trying to sort of double track a project, like a transportation project, both through appropriations? Yeah. No, I don't think so. We have not received any direction from, you know, Capitol Hill that this is not something that they would entertain. To me, that would probably just be, you know, sort of a wise strategic move, especially if you've got a, you know, a huge priority at the local level, you know, you, there's nothing, again, precluding you from asking for it in both. You know, obviously if it moves further down on one, you know, process, you can probably work with your member of Congress to, you know, try to tweak some of your, your other submissions. But something to keep in mind, there's no, there's no right or wrong to that. It's really more of a strategic consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, comments by the board. Supervisor Raleigh.
Uh, yeah, I got no problem going first, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank you for allowing folks to have the opportunity to speak today. I know there was a number of letters too with their names read. Those titles didn't reflect that those were all leadership folks, folks of leadership from Kettleman City. So I just wanted to reiterate that point. I know one of the letters from Mr. Bob Lewis, he's the, the former president of the Kettleman City Chamber of Commerce. He wrote in strong support of this as well. Mr. Chairman, I think our, our lobbyist just hit the nail on the head right now when he said, you know, this is an opportunity to show strong support. And I believe, in my personal opinion, that we can't ask, whether it be the state or the federal government for help if we ourselves don't show that a certain project is priority. And I know the board, I know the board supports Kettleman City. The, the board has shown it. The board, going back in 2009, many members of the board, I know Sue Fagundes, Sue, Sue, as for sure, we cast votes, Mr. Chairman, where we dedicated $60,000 for a consultant for Kettleman City to have him for a year. And in that year, that consultant did a number of things, one of which was ultimately organize and relaunch the Kettleman City Chamber of Commerce. But we held a multitude of meetings out there with the board's dedication to that resource. And this pedestrian bridge, Mr. Chair, always floats to the top. I mean, it's something, you know, it's a no brainer. It's something that's well needed. We all passed through there. This is a project that would benefit the entire county, as stated multiple times right now by the commoners. You know, this is an area that we all pass through. And, and, but then when you talk locally, what this project could do to release, you know, the stress level. These are parents who more likely than not are at work and they, and they, their elementary children, while they're at work, are crossing a major busy highway two times a day just for school. Not to mention the times when the kids want to get a snack and they got to cross back over to go to the store or whatever other reasons. But, and then the other strong show, show of support by the county for Kettleman was the engagement of the Safe Routes to School project and working with the school district. And look what we started on that point, Mr. Chairman. All that curb, gutter and sidewalk, we strategically started in front of the elementary school and started working that infrastructure of the curb, gutter and sidewalk out into the neighborhoods. And we, and that is labeled as a safe route to school. Here we have an opportunity, Mr. Chair, to, to, to show a strong support that we, we completely mean that and that we're helping to bridge that safe route to school to the west side of Kettleman City. I mean, you know, imagine an opportunity for more walking space for, for folks to get out, get some exercise, you know, having the ability to cross that highway safely and, and get to the other side could help with things like youth obesity, diabetes amongst Latinos in the African-American community, you know, out there, especially in these poorer rural areas. But I, I do, I do want to note, Mr. Chairman, that along with the other resources, I'm looking at my notes now, we've invested in a multiple of county reports. We have the State Route 41 Corridor Smart Growth Improvement Plan. There's also the Caltrans Transportation Concept Report for this district dated back in March 2017. I pulled those up, I researched those over the week, Mr. Chair. And in both those reports, all of this is outlined. And, and, and then also in our county report, it's noted the number of evening meetings, different times of the day where we held these meetings, asking the community to come in. And as you remember, Mr. Chair, we, we had out these big old easels with the big notepads and the markers. And we asked the residents to come in and do what we're being asked to do today. They, they outlined and they ranked their concerns for the community. And this pedestrian over crossing bridge ranked number one in that. So, you know, all that is, I'm, I'm saying that, Mr. Chair, on behalf of the Kettleman City residents who couldn't be here today or get online today, but their voice is already documented. They took the time already to attend these meetings and, and, and their support and their wishes for this is documented. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, my first round of comments, I'll close with thanking Sheriff Robinson, thanking the lieutenant from Highway Patrol, thanking the Kings County Fire Department and all the leadership from Reef Sunset School who spoke in support of this today, Mr. Chair. And I'm very open to the number two project as well, which right now, just off the top in, in, in the, the research from throughout the week, Mr. Chair, I would also be in strong support of the, the EOC building request. As we just went through this pandemic and still going through it, you know, having, having a brick and mortar place, more modernized, centralized location with dispatch and resources would have helped us. And, and with this pandemic not being over yet, or the next time, you know, hopefully not a pandemic, but the next time the county goes under some type of emergency where we got to pull together, I believe this would be a good opportunity to fund that and get that brick and mortar EOC project as well. But I'll hope for now, thank you for allowing me the time, Mr. Chairman, and the members of the board for hearing me out on behalf of the community of Kettleman City. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments by members of the board? President Nats? Okay. And I guess, you know, from the standpoint of, of, you know, the introduction of, of these two or the, the multiple projects, I guess we shouldn't be under any, any false motion. I, I can only imagine what, you know, this bridge might cost and, and a million dollars maybe, you know, stuck into, in California today, trying to get this thing planned. I don't know what the engineering is, but it's, it's definitely a, a starting process to that, to a project like that, as well as possibly the EOC. I don't know what the costs associated with that are or others, but.
Chair, it's $2 million.
I'm not finished yet, so you can wait for a minute.
I was just clarifying, helping you. It's a $2 million project.
Pardon me?
I was just trying to help you, Mr. Chairman. It's a $2 million price tag on the Bridge Overpass.
And when was that done?
Um, I think it was, if I recall right, Mr. Chair, it was in the staff report last week for the study session, but maybe Dominick could clear it up after your comments. So I was just trying to be helpful.
Yep, thanks.
Okay.
Okay. So we've had discussion. I think board members have either expressed or not expressed their opinions. And, and at this point, Madam Counsel, looks like you have a, a thought.
Mr. Chair, I was just thinking you might be able to focus the discussion by asking one member to make a motion ranking all of the projects. And then the board could discuss through the amendment process whether they would adjust that ranking. That might be a good way to start the discussion rather than perhaps people just throwing out different ideas, different projects to their flavor.
Yeah. Ms. Campbell?
Yes. So we're asking that you rank at a minimum four projects. And if you'd like, we can bring up the slide again so you can see the projects.
Yes, why don't we do that?
Sarah, could you bring up the one slide? And during our discussion today, we did state that the Juvenile Center project doesn't fit any of the categories. Also, we were having difficulty finding a category for the jail rehabilitation expansion project. So I would definitely cross those off the list. And then the other ones, we seem to think that there might be some funding streams. We do still need to do some checking on whether some of those funding streams will fund design services. But we would like to keep them on the list and let us do our work to see if we can find a way to submit your priority projects.
All right. Thank you. So at this point, we would, to, to move to action on this item, someone would need to move projects forward in some sort of ranking and then we could deliberate that process. So if you would, please pull down the comment questions, again, the slide presentation.
Sir, if you could bring it down again, thank you.
Are you, are you ready to entertain a motion right now?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I'll ask counsel for help on this too, but I would like to be. But I would like to begin the building process of a motion by ranking the, uh, the Kettleman City, uh, Overpass Bridge is number one, uh, of the county's priority. Congressman Valadell, number two, the EOC request. And then with counsel's, um, guidance, I'd like to leave the three and four spot open for, uh, um, friendly amendments to the motion, uh, giving other, um, uh, uh, given opportunity for the other members of the board to, uh, drop in, uh, the three and four on my motion, if that's allowable. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That is procedurally allowable or Supervisor Valley may want to make the motion for one and two and just address that, and then another member could make a motion for three or four or both?
Um, thank you, Ms. Chair. If it's okay with you, I'll, I'll stand by and, and wait to hear if there's anything, uh, uh, my fellow colleagues on three and four.
Okay, thank you. And, and I think maybe, uh, you know, Ms. Campbell, if you could outline kind of the vision of the Ja- Jackson Ranch project. You know, I think as we were always struggling for, uh, new jobs in the community, um, tax impacts and growth. And, and, uh, could you maybe outline some of the, uh, the positive aspects of, of, uh, the Ja- Jackson Ranch project and how that ranking fell?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Jackson Ranch project is a new development project that is slated to go south of Kettleman City off of the I-5 corridor. It will be a stop that, uh, there's a lot planned to happen with that right now. Uh, the developers are in discussions with some warehousing entities. Um, it would bring jobs to Kings County. It could bring over, you know, we had a discussion the other day and we talked about 200 jobs. It also, the, where it is situated, it would help the trucking industry, um, with some of their distance guidelines. And so it could be an opportunity for that trucking industry and the movement of goods. It could also bring, uh, tax revenue to the county. It's a very positive project for the county. Um, it's in the midst of planning stage. Uh, Mr. Gatska is on the line. If he wants to add anything, um, I would open it and ask him to come on and talk a little more about it. Um, but it's a very positive project. It could bring jobs, economic, uh, growth and, uh, tax revenue to the county.
Mr. Gatska, are you available?
Morning Chairman, uh, members of the board, Greg Gatska, Community Development Agency Director, and Rebecca Campbell, our CEO, um, kind of really highlighted, um, some of the key points on the Jackson Ranch development. What, uh, what we've been working on really for the last 11 years with you on this is, is economic development. Uh, not only job growth, but it's, it's, uh, tax-based growth for, for the county that is very rare when it comes to urban, urban development. So, uh, we have a, a 25 acre site out there that really is oriented to, uh, the direct highway commercial activities with a key truck stop, gas stations, um, eateries that will cater to the Interstate 5 travelers and, and, uh, trucking industry that's, that's currently utilizing it and really has keyed in on Kettleman City area. And, and that, we're trying to get the truck traffic out of Kettleman as best we can to a more strategically located area that's conducive to that kind of traveler and, and truck traffic, uh, but yet generate a lot of extra revenue for the county. And that's what Jackson Ranch is oriented for. What Mrs. Campbell also alluded to though is we've got 115 acres that really is oriented to the warehousing industry and the truck transfer industry, uh, that is going to be key to that. That happens to be secondary phases, but what we're finding out through the developer is the interest is already there. So part of what, uh, what we proposed, uh, with the improvements on Utica Avenue and Interstate 5 on that on-ramp, off-ramp is really is, is to incentivize getting those industries positioned a lot quicker than we anticipated, which means additional property tax, sales tax, uh, job growth. So it really is, it's an investment that we've been looking to, to kind of leverage. We have a lot of interest out there. Uh, we know there's a lot of other competing interests when dollars come available, uh, but we just wanted to present that to you. One of the other things that we've been strategically doing with the CAO's office and, and, uh, finance department is also leveraging any new construction that comes into the county, uh, that's over $5 million that we've done, like with the solar project, that gives us a boost of sales tax through the construction activity. So that's another revenue source that we've been looking at leveraging. We've already successfully done that for you with the solar project. So this really is, uh, it's an investment. Um, I know you have a tough job comparing against the other projects, but, uh, just wanted to share with you that, that it's an investment for long-term revenue growth for the county.
Awesome. Thank you for that, uh, clarification on that item. Uh, is interested in hearing any further in-depth discussion on items, uh, other than these three that have been presented at this point? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board again for, uh, some sort of action or, uh, providing another project, uh, into the mix here.
Mr. Chair, you currently have a motion pending and no second.
Okay. Right, so, uh, with the, uh, friendly amendment offer, I would add, uh, as project three, the Jackson Ranch project to that, if that would be acceptable.
That's the thing, Mr. Chair, and I, and I do have strong support for that as well. I didn't, I just didn't want to put up two projects from my district. Um, I wanted to have respect to my, uh, fellow colleagues for, to hear their priorities as well. But that has strong support as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so with that, I would, I would second that, uh, item with the friendly amendment adding the Jackson Ranch to that list. Is there a fourth item or are we staying with three?
Mr. Chairman, if, Mr. Chairman, if there's no, uh, other, uh, wish from the board, uh, for the fourth item, um, if it's still, uh, eligible, I would like to add the, uh, Sheriff's Department request for the body cameras is number four.
That would need to be acceptable to you, Mr. Chair, as the second on the motion?
Well, for, uh, before I second the motion, could I get clarification on whether that's an acceptable, um, item?
Yes, just to go over all of the, uh, eligible, the District Attorney's Office Family Justice Center project would still be eligible. The Human Services Agency Noncongregate Low Barrier Shelter would still be eligible. And the Sheriff's Department Body Camera Project would still be eligible.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, so that project has been, uh, thrown out there and, and, uh, I would second that as well. We have four projects now. Uh, one last time, any interest in adding any other, uh, projects to the list? I'm not seeing any interest, uh, at this time. So, uh, we do have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Joe Nebs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon is absent. Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Okay, we have four in favor, one absent. And, uh, thanks for everyone attending today on this item. And, uh, at that, with that?
We have a second part to this item, Mr. Chair.
Okay, onto the second. Yes, so the, uh, the transit agency request and Supervisor Valley, you'd asked for that to be moved later, uh, or considered later. So do you want to, uh, you have comments?
Uh, Mr. Chair, my, my, my only comments, first of all, I want to say thank you to the board, uh, for passing that motion. It shows, uh, uh, an act of compassion, uh, in a number of ways. And I'm just speaking to the number one priority of the Kettleman City Overpass. But, Mr. Chair, the, uh, the, you know, the, the letter, the only issue that I had with the letter, besides the obvious fact that now we're now going to compete, uh, uh, with, you know, with the projects we just prioritized. I don't, I, I don't think that makes sense. I, I, I reached out to, uh, our CAO, Rebecca Campbell, last week. I called her up when I saw this come up. I asked her, you know, how did this letter, you know, get printed up? Uh, you know, we all have a copy of it right now. It's right, it's printed on letterhead, ready for you to sign. And I, at that time, Mr. Chair, I didn't think it was fair to, uh, you know, what was, what was taking place. Meaning last week I was so happy when we heard we had this opportunity. We had a good discussion on the study session. As soon as the meeting was over, I'm on the phone, I'm reaching out, uh, Kettleman City Community Services District. I'm, I'm on their board meeting that night, giving them this information, passing along from, uh, uh, from the board on, on this earmark opportunity. You know, I had a call that same day with Superintendent Sanchez, Chairman Lupi Chavez from Reef Sunset School District. And, and, and the, the community went into this week-long campaign organizing letters, getting support. And so knowing all that was going on, and that's where I was brought up in this business that, you know, that's what you do. Uh, you got to show the board support here, but to come back on Friday and see that this letter with no effort, no discussion, was not even included in the study session last Tuesday of the board, that the CAO just got this letter and put it on the agenda, uh, printed up, ready for you to sign. Um, I didn't feel that that was fair, Mr. Chair, not only to my district, but I feel it was shared to the DA, DA Faguna, Sheriff Robinson, um, anyone else who was taking the time to submit projects. And, and nobody else got the consideration. You know, we had 12 letters come in from Kettleman City. Again, I try to be ma- negative, Mr. Chair, but no one else got that same, uh, ability to have their, their request put on letterhead and sent to you, ready to be signed, again, Mr. Chair. So that, that was the issue. So, um, the CAO didn't have a good answer, uh, for me on how this happened. She said the letter just came in and she put it on. I asked her, she spoke to any members of the board to get directive to do this, uh, you know, which is what would happen normally, um, to get something on agenda. She said she did not, but I would, I would leave the rest of that explanation, uh, to her. I think the public deserves to hear, you know, how this just got on here like this. I don't think it's fair and it just doesn't, um, it, it doesn't coincide with what we just did. It competes against what we just did. This is not a county entity, um, but I'll leave it there. Thank you for hearing me out, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, well, and, and I, in all fairness, I think the timeline has been so, uh, compacted that, um, you know, as people become aware of the, the opportunity that, that, uh, you know, I, I think we want to be inclusive, not exclusive. And, uh, so again, I, you know, it's just a tough timeline and, and I'm certainly not aware of all that was involved with that, but I think we need to, you know, be considerate of everyone in the community and county and projects. But, uh, having said that, um, so is there a motion to include this, uh, or I would entertain a motion to include item B, uh, as a, uh, of writing a letter of support for the, uh, the transit agencies, uh, project at this time?
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, Joe Nebs, I, I, uh, just as a disclaimer, uh, I am the, uh, chairman of, of CART. Um, CART is in the process of designing an intermodal transportation model, um, that will en- enhance the, uh, uh, public transportation of Kings County, um, and all communities in the county. Uh, this will also be a hub for all of the other, uh, public transit agencies and, and private, whether it's Greyhound, Orange Belt, Amtrak, um, carpooling. Uh, this will be, uh, uh, certainly a, a, a very good project for the entire county. Um, and, and the, um, people that ride public transportation. Uh, this, this project will be a 40 or 50-year project that will help, uh, people with public transportation, uh, in, in a number of ways by having, um, everything in one, one shop, one shop location. Um, talk about public safety, that is a public safety, uh, concern of, uh, public transportation. And so all of the, uh, uh, abilities to be able to provide transportation to people who normally, uh, either can't afford it, whether it's, uh, uh, people with special needs or, uh, aged and, uh, people that, uh, um, are, are unable to drive or use other modes, modes of transportation. So, um, I, you know, the competition of the county is one thing, but this is a nationwide, uh, contest, uh, if you want to phrase it in that. Um, while we only have one congressional district, um, there are 40, 435 other congressional districts, uh, scattered out across the nation. And so our competition is not, um, between our boundaries. Um, our competition is the other, um, congressman in, in, uh, in Washington. So, um, I, I, again, I think public transportation, uh, is, is a very worthy, uh, project. Um, I think, um, public transportation is, and, and while, uh, the COVID has severely, uh, impacted our ability to serve people, I think we are certainly going to have a higher, uh, and better need in the future. So I would continue to like to see that letter go ahead and, uh, go out. And whether it's not funding from the congressional, um, earmarking process, I think it's important to get this project on the radar for other funding opportunities, uh, because this is a, uh, somewhere between 30 and 40 million dollar project overall. Some of it will be, uh, funded through other, uh, means of, of financing. So this, uh, earmark is, is certainly just a portion of its, uh, uh, funding needs. Uh, but it, it could, uh, enable us to better serve many people in this county. So with that, thank you very much.
And I think, you know, when you look at the state as a whole and the direction they want to move people into, um, clearly, uh, multimodal transportation and the high-speed rail scenario, uh, you know, all of those things are, are, they're trying to get people out of their cars and, and into public transportation. And so, uh, that is one of the issues that we're going to have to deal with. I think many federal or state mandates are, you know, going to require that and, uh, continue to move towards that. But, uh, uh, further, uh, discussion?
Mr. Chair, go ahead. Make the motion to, uh, that.
Okay, so for clarification, if you didn't hear, Supervisor Fagundes made a motion to, uh, write the letter of support. Is there a second?
Nebs will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to, uh, support the, um, the, uh, transit project. And, uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chairman, yes, I have a problem for discussion after the motion.
Please.
A quick question. Um, does, I know Sue Nebs said that this, uh, project benefits all of the county. Does it benefit the city of Corcoran?
Uh, we are currently in negotiations with the city of Corcoran and we are providing service with the limited Amtrak, um, uh, uh, service that has been kind of the linchpin between, uh, Hanford and Corcoran. So we are, uh, providing services, uh, in the morning, uh, and expanding those services in the future. So yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. Cause the letter, the letter doesn't state to that. The letter, you know, talks about this, um, as a, uh, it says this, in the first paragraph, "The project will result in the substantial redevelopment of a four-acre area in downtown Hanford." And it talks about how it would revitalize this area. So it talks specifically, uh, to Hanford. Um, and again, um, I, I appreciate the comments and the different points of view, Mr. Chair, but I'm, I'm going to be voting no because this is, uh, on this, on, on this letter here. When, when it comes to this letter, um, you know, the CAO still didn't give the public an explanation on how this letter got on here right now, uh, so, so that other entities can learn from this. Okay, you know, everyone had to go the long way around, but to me, the deck seems stacked when someone else's interest for the, the same pot of money, when someone else's interest has a pre-written letter in front of the entire board right now to be signed. And again, Mr. Chair, I'm voting no because nobody else got this. So this was a separate project, a separate pot of money. I would be a yes vote to certainly help out, you know, uh, 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 an agency with, within Kings County. And it, and it is a good overall project, but it sends, it's, it just sends the wrong signal. But it sends, it's, it just sends the wrong signal. And it, I believe it's going to confuse, uh, um, the priori- prioritization of the county to Congressman Valadale when, when he gets one letter from us saying, here's our priority. But, uh, and then he sees a southern letter where the first line says, "Kings County Board of Supervisors would like to offer strong support for the community project funding requested by CART." I don't, I just don't understand that, Mr. Chair. And I think the C A O before this vote owes the public and everyone else who is competing for this pot of money an explanation on why this letter got here so easily.
Ms. Campbell, I, I think you have, you'd like to speak, so go ahead.
Yes, I would, thank you. Um, so this was a request that came in Thursday. I did feel compelled to put the request on as requested to our office. Um, but I want to point out that our lobbyist, uh, Joe Cron and I had a conversation over the weekend and we talked about possibly revising the, the letter. Um, so, Mr. Cron, could you, could you talk about our discussion that we had and the possibility that we could do a revision to the letter to make sure that the emphasis is put on our projects?
Absolutely, thank, thank you for that opportunity. Yes, I think, um, and this speaks to, I think, the concern raised by Supervisor Valley. You know, I think one way to go about this, if the board would want to express support for this, but trying not to upend, obviously, what are clearly your board's priorities, you could modify the letter to, to send a letter to, to your congressman, uh, basically reiterating, um, noting the projects that have been submitted through his official online system, these are our priorities, uh, urging support for those, uh, and then saying, you know, in addition to that, there is a, a project that's been put forth by the Public Transit Agency that would do A, B, and C. Um, you know, this is a support that, or this is a project that has merit and is something that we could support. Um, that way you can make it very clear that your board has your own priorities and yet this is company that you're also interested in, would have benefits that would be countywide. Make it a little bit more clear that, uh, again, your priorities are upfront and that you're able to do this. I would make a further generic comment about this. The Public Transit Agency is doing its due diligence, by the way. The House Appropriations Committee has basically told stakeholders, it's great to get, uh, expressions of community support and other stakeholders' support for your projects. So essentially what they're doing is, again, their due diligence, they're reaching out to the board saying, well, that makes sense. Let's get Kings County to support our project. Um, you know, I think you may actually, uh, as we go further down this process, you may have other agencies, cities, maybe even some nonprofits coming to the board saying, would you be willing to do a letter of support for our earmark request? And of course, you'll be in a position to be able to, to say yes or no to those. Um, and in fact, as the county goes, obviously for, uh, the pedestrian bridge, we already have, this is great, we already have them in hand, a lot of letters of support from the community for this. We're going to want to submit those as, uh, evidence of community support for the county's own project. So just to put it in context, people who are submitting, or entities that are submitting earmark requests are doing their due diligence in getting other expressions of, of support for the House, uh, Appropriations Committee. So again, to, to Rebecca's point, I think the idea would be to make sure yours are front and center in any letter and you, you could mention support for other agencies if you so choose. But just make it clear where it falls in the, in the order.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, that makes a lot of sense. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Cron. Mr. Chairman, if, uh, if the maker of the motion would be willing to, uh, amend to include that suggested language, I could be a yes vote, Mr. Chair. I want to be fair and open-minded. That explanation makes a lot more sense than what I've been asking for since early Friday afternoon. Um, so, so that could be amended, Mr. Chair. I'd, I'd love to join the board and support.
Supervisor Fagunis, would you accept that as a amendment? Okay. Okay, we, uh, we have two, uh, nots, Madam.
And the second needs to accept the amendment.
He did.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the voice.
Yeah.
Okay, very good, thank you.
All right, uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verbun is absent, Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Okay, we have four in favor, one absent. Thank you for, uh, that item. Right, now we'll move back to, uh, item 6A in the regular agenda items, which is the Human Services Agency. And, uh, Ms. Bagay.
Good morning, Chairman, Members of the Board. Um, this is Sonia Bagay, Human Services Agency Director. And I'm here with some of my staff to present, um, a proclamation announcing March 2021 as a social work appreciation month. And I wanted to share with you that who's on, um, Webex today, um, is some of our social workers, social work supervisors, managers, and, um, deputy over social services area. So I'm going to briefly read off their names. Jamie Bacon, Deborah Olivera, Crystal Escalante Fernandez Valderas, Amy Cantu, Patricia Schubert, Torey Wolcox, Jason Campani, Sekoya Vatista, and Tiffany Murphy, Lieber, and Monica Connor. So we're going to, uh, share with you just a couple of things. March was first proclaimed National Professional Social Worker Month in, um, 1984. And every year since then, we have been proclaiming March as a social work appreciation month. Um, our team recognizes our social workers, um, and we organize weekly celebrations during the month of March. And this year's theme is "Social Workers Are Essential." And while we have recognized how critical our social workers are for safety of kids and adults, um, the supports during this past year, um, the challenges that our community has, um, faced during COVID has really highlighted how critical social workers are. Despite COVID, um, they kept investigating child abuse and adult abuse. They kept facilitating family visits and facilitating various supports, um, including the issues that were really brought on by COVID. Majority of our social workers are, um, in a 24/7 setting and, um, really are first responders to the investigation. And I wanted to just take a few minutes of your time and share some, um, share some, um, stats of what are, um, what are social workers sort of, um, encountered during this past year. So I wanted to start with our child welfare program and just going to cover three, uh, programs very briefly. So in child welfare, we have 50 social workers and at the moment, um, 13 vacancies. So I did want to say, we do have, um, a recruitment out. So if you, um, have social workers and know social workers, please encourage them to apply. Um, we, so our team of 50 social workers today with 10 supervisors are also supported by 10 social services assistants and our clerical team and their three managers. So during this past year, they have received and answered 1,800 child abuse hotline calls. They've conducted 1,018 investigations and as a result of which, we have, um, removed 196 kids and who have entered our child welfare system. At the same time, um, our social workers worked with families and 174 kids exited our child welfare system, hundreds of, 104 of whom reunified with their families. We also successfully completed 47 adoptions and 23 kids either emancipated out of the system or, and went into guardianship. Currently, we work with 483 kids. That's our, that's the number of kids in our child welfare system today. And 362 of those kiddos are in out-of-home placement and 65% of which are in our county resource family home. And this stat is significant because county family resource home means that our kids stay in our county, keep their connections and remain close to their home and reunification becomes more possible. So in addition to our social workers, really who's critical in our child welfare system are foster parents, um, which our current name is Resource Family Home. So I do want to also encourage anybody out there who's interested in partnering with us becoming a foster home to reach out to us. So that's child welfare. Our next program, um, smallest of our social work program, is Adult Protective Services. We have four social workers and one supervisor and this, and one supervisor in this team. Um, during this past year, Adult Protective Services, um, received 1,073 calls and conducted 276 investigations. And we currently have, um, 40 open cases, so working with 40 adults, um, in adult abuse investigations. And our final program is In-Home Supportive Services. In-Home Supportive Services has 16 social workers and two supervisors. And this team, along with Adult Protective Services team, is supported by eight clerical staff and one supervisor. And during this past year, they have received 739 new In-Home Supportive Services applications. They were also responsible for 2,191 existing case reassessments. We do in-home reassessments that really help, um, the adults, um, and disabled adults in our, in our community and kids, um, stay in home and avoid, um, uh, institutionalization. Uh, we're currently working with 2,817 IHSS recipients. And this team, over this past year, with assistance from our clerical team, has connected 1,141 new IHSS providers to IHSS recipients. And during COVID time, um, they have had a lot of new, um, lot of new activities, um, including wellness calls, um, and, um, assisting in, um, informing people about vaccinations. And they've also distributed over 18,000 sets of PPEs to IHSS providers and recipients. Um, and whether we're talking child welfare, adult protective services, or in-home supportive services, um, behind each of these numbers are kids, adults, and families that our social workers support and help. Um, we've impacted tremendous number of families in our community and usually during some of the hardest times in their lives. And while it's truly impossible to share the individual stories, we do have two stories that we'd like to share. And Monica Connor, uh, is going to, I'm going to hand it over to her and she'll, she'll share the, briefly the two stories with you.
Thank you, Sonia. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The first is a case assigned to In-Home Supportive Services social worker Amy Cantu. Every year recipients receiving IHSS services have a reassessment of need in order to be served under the In-Home Supportive Services Eligibility Program. Amy discovered that a recipient was at risk of becoming homeless and also had ongoing health conditions. The recipient at the time was hospitalized and did not have a plan for aftercare. It is not easy for any of us to give up any part of our independence and giving in to the thought of aftercare in a skilled nursing facility for this recipient was extra difficult. Amy did not hesitate to meet with the recipient at the hospital. Amy linked the recipient to community resources and assisted in developing a plan to keep the recipient safe once released from the hospital. Through Amy's diligent work and caring spirit, she was able to help the recipient feel comfortable. And by working together, they developed a plan that would keep the recipient safe, giving her a safe space to recover back to good health. Through the pandemic, the Adults Division encountered many other challenges due to COVID-19. Through it all, they remained a strong united team of social workers. They conducted safety calls to recipients and when recipients didn't answer, social workers drove to the recipient's home to check on them. Social workers would not go home for the day until they made sure they confirmed the recipient was doing okay. I want to say thank you to Amy. I think Amy is on today. Thank you so much for, um, sharing that story. Um, the other is for the Child Welfare Division. Child Welfare, for Child Welfare Division, losing foster parents to COVID-19 added to the complexity of the work social workers faced during this pandemic. Crystal Escalante and social worker Fernando Villarres are two social workers that encountered this scenario and did the best they could to navigate through the circumstances. This is a story. In February 2021, the impact of COVID-19 became an unescapable reality for our team of social workers, youth, and foster parents. While trying to navigate their own personal insecurities and the complexities of the pandemic, it hit especially hard one late night. The on-call social worker Crystal Escalante received a call that a depending young teen was needing immediate assistance as his foster parent lost the battle to COVID-19. Upon arrival, Crystal observed the youth standing with law enforcement. The youth was noticeably distraught. He refused to re-enter the home for his belongings. When arriving to the agency, the youth stated that he did not have the strength to exit the car. So Crystal sat with him in the car for over an hour. She allowed the youth to leave in that moment. Crystal worked throughout the night, fighting back her own emotions, pried through the best she could to figure out the next steps to connect the youth with family. His assigned social worker Fernando accompanied the youth to the funeral and continues to provide support to the youth through these challenging times. I am very proud of the social workers that represent Kings County and continue to help in keeping our community safe. Thank you for your time. These were the two stories we'd share.
So with that, I would.
Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to, um, that concludes, um, what we wanted to share and just want to recommend your Board adopted proclamation announcing March 2021 as a social work appreciation month. Thank you.
Thank you, and, uh, thanks to everyone involved. You know, I mean, from the standpoint, we all have personal experiences of our own challenges and those that are in the most vulnerable positions, that those things are only multiplied in, uh, terrible numbers. And so we truly appreciate everything you all do. And, and, uh, with that, I bring it back to the board for, uh, motion to, uh, uh, accept the proclamation.
Uh, Nev's moves as presented.
So we have a motion by Nev, second by Fagundes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verbun is absent, Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Okay, we have four in favor, one absent. At this time, we're going to take a three-minute recess and we will be back. Okay, this time we'll reconvene and, uh, we will move to item 5B, which is Information Technology. And RIT Director John Deblin.
Good morning, Chairman Peterson and fellow members of the board. Um, the item I have before you is an amendment. It's actually amendment number one, uh, with Megabyte Systems, Inc. The amendment, agreement amendment cancels the Assessment Appeals Module of the Property Tax System, which is not cost-effective to be used in Kings County. Recommendation is to approve an agreement amendment with Megabyte Systems to remove the Assessment Appeals Module. The fiscal impact, this action will prevent the expenditure of $15,857 per year from the Board of Supervisors budget. Information Technology arranged a demonstration of the Appeals Module for the clerk of the board and admin on February 25th this year. The clerk of the board and admin felt that there are aspects of the program that are good, but it was deemed that the cost was prohibitive to utilize given the small number of applications Kings County receives for assessment. The module The module also requires an online way to pay for the application fee, and Kings County does not have that piece yet. When the agreement was brought to the board, there was no discussion on the assessment appeals module or cost, and it was discovered during budget discussion. In conferring with the administrative office and county council, this amendment was written to formalize the cancellation of this service module. Should the county ever have a need of this service in the future, it can always be added back into the Megabyte property tax system. Kings County has not paid for any portion of this assessment appeals module. It was to be charged next fiscal year. County Council wrote and approves the amendment to this agreement. I take any questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you, John. We'll bring it back to the board. Any questions, comments, or entertain motion?
Nev, seconds?
So we have a motion by Fagundes, second by Nev. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Joe Nev?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon is absent. Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Okay, we have four in favor, one absent. We'll now move to item D, administration. Rebecca Campbell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the weekly item regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. I have a couple of updates for your board today. I wanted to let your board know that the State of California and the National Association of Counties have reached out to the U.S. Department of the Treasury to seek clarification regarding some of the implementation issues and concerns regarding the American Rescue Plan and the Coronavirus State Recovery Fund. Also, last week, the Governor Newsom announced that this week ahead, California will greatly expand eligibility for COVID-19 vaccines. Starting on April one, all adults age fifty or older will be eligible for vaccines. On April fifteenth, the vaccine tiers will be eliminated, clearing the way for anyone over age of sixteen to receive a vaccine. This news comes a few weeks after President Biden announced that he is directing states to make vaccines available to all adults starting on May first. The states anticipate a significant increase in vaccine supply over the coming months, allowing eligibility to be expanded. I wanted to let your board know that. Those are all the updates that I have today. I want to let the board know that the emergency operations center committee meetings are still occurring, weekly, virtually, and the county is still operating at a modified, modifying its lobby and reducing the exposure levels currently. So I will turn it over to Director of Public Health, Edward Hill, and he can talk about the local health update. Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ed Hill, Public Health. I'm gonna start my presentation, as I always do, by reminding everybody the simple steps we can take to protect ourselves from comical diseases. Those are frequently wash your hands for twenty seconds or more. Don't touch your face with unwashed hands. Stay hydrated with water. A hydrated cell is a healthy cell. Stay home if you're sick, and wear a cloth face covering to protect yourselves and loved ones. Our current numbers, we've collected one hundred and ninety-nine thousand and eleven samples. We currently have five hundred and twenty-eight samples pending. We're currently monitoring five thousand two hundred and ninety-nine individuals. Our total cases since the outbreak began is now at fifteen thousand three hundred and nineteen, unfortunately with two hundred and twenty-four deaths. Our total recovered at this time is nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-two, bringing our active cases to five thousand two hundred and ninety-eight. Skilled nursing facilities have not moved. They've had three hundred and eleven total cases since the outbreak began, two hundred and sixty-nine recovered, and unfortunately forty-two deaths. Also, pleased to announce that the state prison outbreaks have stopped. We've only had one increased case. Their total cases since the outbreak began is now at seven thousand six hundred and sixty-one. They've collected one hundred and twenty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-six test samples with a hundred and forty-one samples pending. They only have one active case at this time, with seven thousand one hundred and eighty-eight recovered and unfortunately seventeen deaths. As usual, we continue to watch hospital data very closely. We're seeing decreases in med surg or general admissions, both, and ICU admissions, both locally and throughout the region. As of yesterday, the local hospital reported only twelve COVID patients in the general admissions and zero patients in the intensive care unit. We are still maintaining a six-day supply for PPE for all of our healthcare providers. The mobile testing program site schedule is up on our website. Our current metrics for the, or excuse me, our current numbers for the blueprint for reopening, our new cases for one hundred thousand is at seven point four. That's our adjusted rate. Our unadjusted rate is at nine point four. We continue to see a decline in new cases. Overall, testing positivity is at three point three percent, and our testing positivity in the lowest quartile of the Healthy Places Index is now at four point three percent. So this means all our new cases for a hundred thousand meets the red tier criteria, and both of our testing positivity meets the orange tier criteria. Our test for a hundred thousand is currently at four hundred and twelve. That's a decrease of about twelve, or excuse me, ten from last week. However, the state's median has also shifted to three hundred and fourteen point zero five. That gives us that credit that we, as I mentioned, our unadjusted new cases is at nine point four, but because we continue to test more than the state median, our adjusted case rate is at seven point four. We will be moving into the red tier tomorrow, and we'll be sending out a press release today, which will include the changes that occur with this move. But essentially, and the high points are, retail stores will be able to start operating at fifty percent of their capacity. So will shopping malls and shopping centers. They will also allow to have reduced capacity in their food courts. Museums and zoos will now be able to operate at twenty-five percent of their capacity. Movie theaters can operate at twenty-five percent of their capacity or a hundred people, whichever is fewer. Gyms and fitness centers will be allowed to operate at ten percent of their capacity. Restaurants will be allowed to operate indoors at a max of ten percent of their capacity, or excuse me, twenty-five percent of capacity or a hundred people, whichever is fewer. There are some other subtle changes, for instance, outdoor live events with assigned seats and controlled mixing. Effective March first, we'll allow, we'll be allowed to allow twenty percent spectators, and there are some other restrictions in there as well. And all of that information is on the state's website as well as our website. On the vaccine update, as Ms. Campbell mentioned, starting this Thursday, April first, everybody that is over the age of fifty will be eligible for vaccine. And then on Thursday, April fifteenth, vaccine eligibility expands to sixteen and over. Last week, between Public Health and Optum Serve, we were able to administer three thousand seven hundred and nineteen vaccines. We did hold a closed point of distribution clinic for second doses at one of our mass clinics from three weeks prior at Corcoran Rack last Sunday and administered three hundred and thirty doses there. We do have plenty of available appointments for all of our clinics. We have a capacity to provide seven hundred doses a day, and we are anticipating an increase in the vaccine demand as a result of the changes on the first and on the fifteenth. Also, the state has made it clear, and I just want to remind your board, that after the thirty-first, we will no longer be able to turn anybody away from being outside the county. That is a mandate by the state. Last week, we did hold a pilot program with King-Tulare Homeless Alliance, the Hanford's Police Department HART team, Kings View, and CART to identify and transport individuals who are experiencing homelessness to public health to get vaccinated. It was a successful event. We will be going over that program and expanding that throughout the county in the days to come. We did receive notice that we will be receiving an extra allotment of Janssen or the Johnson and Johnson this week, and it's anticipated to be around about seven hundred additional doses. And we are expecting them by the end of the week. We'll likely hold some Johnson and Johnson specific clinics once we receive that, and that will be showing up on my turn through the appointment system, like all of our other clinics. We do continue to have some struggles with the state's vaccine system. My turn. The newest glitch is the system is scheduling patients for their second doses when they're not due. You know, for instance, each vaccine has a set amount of days that you have to wait to get your second dose. Some of them are being scheduled too early. We've reported that to the state, and they're working through that. And then finally, I just want to let your board know that we have finally made the full transition to the third-party administrator. That took place yesterday, and as a result of that, that third-party administrator will start allocating vaccines directly to vaccine providers. And just to remind your board, Public Health at this stage becomes a vaccine provider. We will no longer be the one distributing the vaccines. As such, we'll be just transitioning to that role. We'll also be transitioning to an advisor role with Blue Shield to guide them through to make sure that we're, the counties meeting our equity metrics. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Questions from the board?
Question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hey, hey, Mr. Hill, I just got a text from Corcoran Mayor Pat Nolan. She's telling me that, she's being told that the Kings, that our county Public Health Department is gonna be in Corcoran either tomorrow or the day after to vaccinate residents of the Corcoran Station apartment. And if so, they want to request if you could also send the self-swab tests. Sounds like they want to get tested because they heard about those subway gift cards on incentive, so they, they're trying to get a subway card and do a test. I don't know if that's correct information being relayed to me, if you could take that into account with your staff. Thank you.
And Supervisor Valley to the chair, that is correct. That is a pilot program that we're getting ready to launch, where we send mobile folks out for those who are homebound. We can definitely take those testing kits, as well as the subway card stuff, to that event as well.
Thank you.
All right. For the questions from the board. Okay, seeing none, we will move to board member announcements or reports. Supervisor Fagundes.
Supervisor Nev? Thank you, Ms. Chair. Attended a webinar on tax increment financing. I would kind of suggest kind of looking at that. This has been around longer than redevelopment agencies and would help that private Interstate Five project with their funding needs, and was really a creative way to do financing. So tax increment financing is available for those type projects. LAVCO, we did have an election of officers and introduced the budget, and certainly want to thank Greg Gatzka and his staff for putting that budget together and trying to anticipate the future year. At the CART meeting, we approved low-carbon transit operator project list, as well as alternative fuel van purchase. We also discussed naming rights for the new transit center, as well as the transit pass considerations. Anything to try to boost confidence in the riders in order to get them back into public transit. And then at the Kings County Association of Governments, we also talked about the developmental plans for transportation, as well as accepting the compliance audits, and just wrapped up the Valley Voice briefings that we had. And so overall, I think everyone was very, very happy with the, everything, the way that project worked out, and look forward to doing it next time. At CalViva, we suffered a breach of information, and because of a brief breach of information, we had to notify thirteen thousand clients of the breach, and we're working through those notifications, as well as making changes to operations to prevent those kind of data breaches in the future. And then on Saturday, had the pleasure of being a judge for the four-H presentation program. Three counties were involved with clubs with, from Fresno Kings and Tulare County represented. Had some outstanding presentations from members from nine years old to eighteen years old, and it was a very enjoyable time to be able to spend some time on Zoom with those projects because they not only, they enforced their skills, not just in their project proficiency, but also in their ability to use media. So I, I think overall, it was a good project. So with that, thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Valley?
Yes, Ms. Chair, Ms. Chair, I'll be brief. As noted, I spent a lot of time working with Kettleman City folks this past week, attended again virtually the Tuesday night meeting of the Kettleman City Community Services District to let them be aware of this opportunity, which ended up voting to do a letter of support, as we know. I also relayed to them this upcoming opportunity that the county agreed to get some information or something organized, some kind of Zoom meeting with the CSDs and the County of Kings. So they said, they relayed their thank yous on that as well. And then I was asked to stay on for another item. Interesting enough, Mr. Chair, as you know, the Board of Supervisors, we have the three million dollar, twenty-year agreement, where we are putting money aside to help with the Kettleman City Water Treatment Plant. So Mr. McGann had presented an item to the members of the CSD, where he was asking them for permission to approach the Board of Supervisors once again to ask for more money than what is, that we budget for and what we allot for every year. And so, as you know, there's a schedule of payments every year. He was asking them to seek permission from us to go above and beyond that. It was interesting that the board, they wouldn't respond with a motion on that, and so they, they did direct Mr. McGann to begin to help them with actual line, budget, budget line items and, and keep them more informed on that, as they felt they had a responsibility to make sure that their spending was more diligent and, and that they were being more fiscally attentive to that before reaching out to the Board of Supervisors, asking for more money. So I know we had this discussion, I think, two years ago, or even a year ago. It's hard to tell now with the pandemic timeline, but sounded like that was an issue that was trying to get back on our radar, but CSD did not want to do that at that time, so I wanted to relay that to you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And I have no comments, so we'll move to board member correspondence.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. A number of items in correspondence. We have petition for change involving water from Pleasant Grove, Verona Mutual Water Company, Jack Baber, Princeton, Cordura, Glenn Irrigation District, and Providence Irrigation District. We also have a notice from the State Water Resources Control Board, notice of petitions for temporary change involving the transfer of up to one eighty-three for eighteen acre foot of water from right holders in the Sacramento Valley to state water and Central Valley Projects. Also in correspondence is a notice from San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, their annual air toxics report of 2020. There's also a letter from the Children's House, Children's Health Defense California Chapter regarding COVID-19 programs. There's no upcoming meetings or events. Upcoming agenda items for next week will be the COVID-19 update from Administration and Public Health, appointment of the fire chief, a resolution to amend the hemp fees from the Ad Commissioner. From Human Services Agency, they'll have an agreement with KCao for assistance with Medi-Cal Health Enrollment Navigators Project. They'll have a First Amendment for agreement with KCao for children's resources and referral services. They'll also have an item for the fiscal year 2021 budget to allow purchases of vehicles. From the district, excuse me, District Attorney's Office, they will bring their workers' comp and automobile fraud grant funds for purchase of surveillance equipment. From the Health Department, there'll be an item regarding adverse childhood experiences, aware subcontracts. From Information Technology, there'll be a security system renewal agreement update from the Job Training Office, a request for approval to conduct adult and dislocated worker career services from Public Works. There's a number of items. There'll be a request for services with Tulare County Surveyor, a request regarding fiscal year 1920 SB one funded Kings County roadway improvement projects. They'll bring an update on the Kings View Building remodel project, and they'll also bring a grant purchase of new alternative fuel vehicles, and an item regarding surplus vehicle equipment declaration. In two weeks, there'll be an item regarding the Kettleman Hills Waste Facility quarterly report, and also from the Health Department, the tuberculosis control program item. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So we have reached our final item, which is adjournment, and the next regularly scheduled meeting will be held on Tuesday, April sixth, 2021, at nine AM. And thank you all for your participation today. Meeting adjourned.